Meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on September 18th, 2023. Notices were posted on the bulletin board in the first floor entrance hall of the School District Administration Building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Here.
Dr. Marr?
Here.
Mrs. McLennan? Ms. Nyquist?
Here.
Ms. Rubelo? Mrs. Case?
Here. Okay, I think we're going to go to the presentation. I'll have Mr. Alexis.
Terrific. Thank you, Mrs. Case. So we have our annual presentation on the 2024 statewide assessments and the HIB report. I want to invite and thank you for being here this evening. This is our administrative leadership team who will be giving the presentation. Presentation will be on the website tomorrow. But let me begin. So Jack, could you, could, can we get the presentation up on the screen for our audience at home? And I'm just going to give a not so brief introduction to the presentation. We could just go to that first slide because I'm going to begin with the, the district goals. We're, we're invested in these four goals and have district-wide support. We have the full support of our Board of Education and we're confident, confident that these concentrated, interdependent efforts will yield improvements in student achievement. First, we've placed a sustained focus on data analysis as a way to assess individual student performance and to identify patterns that can inform instruction for content areas and grade levels. Second, we're committed to raising student attendance. For the month of September, we maintained a district attendance rate of just above 97%. We were slightly below that benchmark at the middle school and we need some help from students and families going forward. We also noticed a dip in attendance at each school on Friday following the holiday last week. We're rolling out the new attendance webpage and we encourage you to take a look at the data for September and the available resources. The bottom line is that we want all of our students with us and engaged in learning every day. But let me clarify that this doesn't mean we want you to send your children to school when they're sick. But we do want our students healthy and in school. Students learn best when they are in school and actively learning. So this is a good time for me to remind everyone out there that though we have two days of professional development on Monday and Tuesday for our teachers next week, school is in session on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we expect to see everyone. Likewise, the NJEA convention during the first week of November is coming up. We are trying something new and we'll have full days of instruction at Central Middle School on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of that week, while the elementary schools follow a half-day schedule and hold their annual parent-teacher conferences. We want and expect to see all of our students when school is open that first week of November. I want to thank our entire staff and our families for making our back-to-school nights such a success. We had excellent attendance at each school and our teachers did a great job of warmly embracing our families. Our next family engagement webinar is on October 17. Dr. Jones just sent out a message about an opportunity to learn about your child's I-ready results and what you can do to support your child at home. And last, our goal number four is our supporting our CUSAC process. That process is underway. We've been attending online meetings with the county office. We have our final session tomorrow and our district CUSAC committee is meeting this week. The self-evaluation that we're required to submit before November 15th will be on the agenda next month. And as for the statewide assessments last spring, overall, the results are mixed. We saw progress in certain grade levels, some real progress, disappointing performance in others, and a good deal of consistency. We're providing a large amount of data on this presentation and outlining our planned interventions, which are all aligned with our district goals and a more sustained focus on data analysis and how it can improve student learning. So please, I'll ask the board members to please hold your questions until the end of the presentation and I'll invite the administrative leadership team to come forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For our audience at home who may not be aware of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, it is a statewide assessment that measures students' progress towards the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for ELA, which is English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. For ELA, they focus on close reading, synthesis of ideas, understanding the meanings of words in context, writing effectively when analyzing sources. Mathematics focuses on applying the skills and concepts, understanding multi-step problems that require abstract reasoning, often in the context of real-world problems. Science assessments focus on applying the scientific concepts in the areas of Earth, Space, Life, and Physical Science. And through this assessment, students are able to demonstrate their acquired skills and knowledge by answering select response and constructive response items. I just wanted to show a breakdown of the students in each grade level that were tested for ELA math and for science only in grade five and eight. Algebra and geometry, and if you see a difference, let's say for instance, grade three, 93 for ELA, or no, for grade four, 87 for ELA, and 86 for math, that means a student was probably absent for the assessment and the makeup assessments. So here are our numbers. Okay, I'm going to pass it along to Mrs. Dawson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So just a brief overview of the grades three through five scores. You could see it's broken down by grade level and then where the students fell based on level one, two, three, four, and five. Levels four and five are considered passing, level three. As a matter of fact, when I look at a lot of the students in level three, they may have only missed that level four by a few points. So I just want to clarify, while it does look like a lot of students or a percentage, there, it could just be a question that they didn't, didn't get correct. So when we drill down on data, those are the things that we kind of look at. The last two columns will show you passing level four and five from 2023 and then 2024. And then the diagonal colors are obviously that cohort. So when you're looking at ELA, I could just give the example, in third grade from 2023, 54.1%, we're in that four and five. The following year, it was 65%. On the reverse side, fourth grade kind of went down just a little bit. And, you know, when we look at data, we might see a short or small number, percentage number, and it's not going to alarm us too much. A student may have moved out, another student in. One student can impact that percentage. But what we get concerned is when it gets a little bit over that, like, 8 to 10% differential. So one of the things that we're looking at is with our PLCs. We're doing grade-level data PLCs and with I-ready now and really getting a better understanding is kind of looking at that and how it's matching up or correlating with NJSLA because it ultimately comes down to your standards and the curriculum. And then the second table is just the New Jersey percentages, which obviously we've done better than New Jersey. That's typical of Long Hill. But we want to keep really directing our instruction, not just challenging the top learners, but working in small skilled groups in the classroom, and that's what our data is going to let us drill down to do. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. And let me move this forward. Okay, so continuing right where Ms. Dawson left off, so that was three to five, and then this is six to eight. So as you can see in where the pink is, that's going to be levels four and five. So if you look straight down that column, you'll see how sixth, seventh, and eighth grades scored. 72% passing at a level four and five and six. 73% in seventh and 72, so we're kind of hovering right in that range. Most of the grade levels, you can see like from three to five up, so we are making some, some good gains there. The colors that match are the same cohort of students from the prior year. So you get to see where they finished from last year to the next year. Okay, so that's overall, again dovetailing right off what she shared. If you look at level three, we're always focused in using multiple measures. So this is one snapshot, the NJSLA, but we're using our I-ready data. We're really trying to drill down and see where those students' deficiencies are. These are the overall percentages, which are very good. We take a look at to see like, these are good, useful. I mean, like, very good in a useful way. But then we want to look more at the standards base to see which areas our teachers can improve their instruction on to then help those students. Okay? And similar to the right is the New Jersey data overall for four and five. It is all the way to the right. You can see what the four and five percentages are in comparison. Okay?
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we also think it's important to show our subgroups in each grade level. So this is a slide that shows grades three through eight, and the different subgroups are listed on here. And these percentages are the levels four and five. So we also use this to show teachers because we're really talking about differentiating instruction for all learners. And this is a helpful tool when we have grade-level meetings at the K-5 and then team meetings in the 6, 8. Okay, now Mrs. Dawson will discuss grades three through five math.
Hello, I'm not going to repeat what I just said about language arts. It's the same, same idea and principle. But we do look at the differences. So if in fourth grade in 2023, 70% were in that range, that number dipped enough to have a concern as to why. So in our PLCs, our data PLCs, we've created these data charts. They're pretty, pretty intense with I-ready scores, NJSLA for reading, like FMP scores. Everything is on there that we can look. And I can meet with, whether it's a grade-level team, an individual teacher, looking at where students are, how they're scoring on the early benchmarks they did. And those conversations we've already started were really more involved than we ever were before. So recognizing, like I said, you know, a few percentage points, you're not going to be overly concerned. But when it drops enough, then we have to say what occurred at that grade level or, you know, with that particular cohort. The one thing is the students do take a different test each year. It's not like you're taking the fourth-grade test and it mirrors, again, in fifth grade, it's obviously the standards for that grade level. So that's something we're really looking at.
Okay, and continuing on to middle school, so that's three to five. Middle school math, we can see the same format, not to reiterate, but you have the same cohorts or the same colors. Levels four and five are all the way to the right on, on the Long Hill table. So we're all hovering in about the same percentage there at about approximately 45, 46%. Some areas, sixth grade had growth, others dipped a little bit, and others kind of maintained or growed at a, at a smaller pace. So that's something that we're really, really focused on, on improving. What I look at when I see this table as well, too, is we have a huge portion at level three. If you look at all the percentages in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have almost a quarter in every grade level or greater right on that borderline that we're really focusing and our teachers are really focusing on. They know exactly who those students are, which is very good based on this data and the I-ready data. So that is a huge focus for this year, right in, I mean, in the beginning of September, we already identified those students, which is helpful for our teachers. And then again, to the right in this table format, you could see our comparison to the state. I will remind everybody, eighth grade, we're going to go over geometry and Algebra I are not included in the eighth-grade data. So that's a whole different slide, which we'll review next.
Thank you. And here are the subgroups for math for grades three through eight, same format as ELA, and again, only showing levels four and five. Oh, I should have said before, an asterisk means it's here, but under 10 students were represented for that category. And here is Algebra and Geometry.
So this is Algebra and Geometry. So students, we might have students just from a course level that take Algebra I as a seventh grader. Very few, but some do take it as a seventh grader. And a portion of our eighth-grade students who, who meet the requirements for that course. So in this, you'll see we're at 95%, which is, which is really, really well. It's a smaller cohort of students, but they're performing well. And then geometry, we had, let's see, 100, yeah. Basically 100% of either a four or five passed, which is, which is really great, and we're really proud of those students working very hard. In comparison to the state numbers, remember, students might sit for these courses at different grade levels. So just to share that information is important.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Vittarello, these are the evidence statements. We did have a table here. Upon reviewing, it is not for public. So he's just going to highlight the evidence statements for math and ELA.
Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that. I forgot I had the next slide. So I just wanted to share a little bit about these tables. As Dr. Jones said, they're not for publication. But the tables that I'm referencing here provide a very good window for both the math and language arts teachers. It takes basically an X and Y access and shows our teachers and us how we performed on each standard. That's more tangible information that we can look at. We can review our curriculum and we can say, okay, we were really strong in these areas. Other areas, we were in need of a little bit of improvement. It also gives us a comparison as the whole percentages did. It gives us a comparison of how we performed on each standard in comparison to the state, which is very, very helpful as well, too. So basically, we're going to be reviewing these. I'm going to be going over these with the Central Middle School Math and Language Arts teachers at the upcoming PD Day. We looked at that data in the beginning of the year and the I-ready data. Now we're going to drill down and look at the evidence table, table statements. And again, we're going to look at the areas of strength and weakness. They're going to go back and look at their pacing guide, see what areas need more attention and where we can scaffold more of those skills and make adjustments to refine our instruction. So ultimately, we can get a better product and instruct the students to support their learning. So that's something that we hope to do in our upcoming PD days.
Okay, thank you. Okay, here are our science scores for grades five and eight. In the second column to the last, for Long Hill, we show the percentage of passing of levels three and four for 2023 as compared to 2024. And then again, compared to the state of New Jersey for 2024. So while we did score higher than the state, we still have some work to do in the area of science for grades five and eight. And then this is broken down into the subgroups for levels three and four. Okay, we thought it would be useful information because at several meetings, we'll talk about how did our students perform prior to the pandemic? And instead of, or in addition to comparing how they scored from 2023 to 2024, we took a look at the 2019 scores. And this is a breakdown of ELA grades three through eight. The first chart you'll see is from 2019. Only, it's for each level, and then in bold, it's levels four and five. And then to the right is how we performed in 2024. So as Mr. Alexis said in the beginning, there are some successes with grade levels, while there are also some areas that we are focusing on that we will discuss further on in the presentation. Okay, we also have the same information formatted the same for math, grades three through eight. First slide is 2019, second slide is 2024. Algebra and geometry also on this slide. And then here is the same format for science, for three and four passing, both 2019 as compared to 2024. Okay, at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Cologne.
In addition to the NJSLA every year, the district also participates in two other state assessments. The Dynamic Learning Maps is what replaces the NJSLA for our students with our most significant intellectual disabilities. And they do test and also Language Arts, Math, and Science at the same grade levels. Because our student size that takes that test is under 10, those, those scores are not reported. All of our students that are multilingual learners are assessed yearly with the ACCESS test, which looks at listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and where they fall in the continuum of the different levels of English acquisition. So there are six levels that the state of New Jersey has identified. A student coming into the country for the first time, most likely enters an entering English language learner, and then they progress through the six different stages. We actually did go through all six stages, what the characteristics of each stage are, and then helpful information on how to meet their needs in the classroom with the staff at the Professional Development Day in August, which was really helpful. So this is our K-5 population and the percentage of students at each grade level and where they measured. The one number that should, we should note is kindergarten, 67% were really at, still at the entering level. And part of the reason for that is we had quite a few students that were brand-new to the district in like March and April, and they were required to take the test in May. So they were brand-new to the country within like two months of them taking this test. Our students do progress through the different levels rather quickly. They need a 4.5, which is between the expanding and bridging levels of language to be eligible to, to exit the multilingual language program. This is the same, the same layout for grades six, seven, and eight. We have a much smaller population at grades six, six, seven, and eight. Most of the time, our kids come in at a younger grade level and usually test out of ELL by the time they get up to the middle school. We had 39 total students in our ESL program for the 23-24 school year, and 11 of them, or 28.2%, did exit the program at the end of last school year. And the exit criteria is a 4.5 and passing review of their academic performance to be sure that they are able to exit out of the ESL program. They are monitored for two years past that point. So we do, they continue to take the ACCESS test and we look at those scores each year after they come back to assure that they continue to make progress in their English language acquisition once they have exited the program. One of the struggles with families that English is not their first language is engaging them within schools because they come to the buildings where most people speak a totally different language. So not only here in Long Hill, but across the state of New Jersey, there's been a big push to figure out ways to engage these families and make them feel welcome in our school and want to come to school to partner with us. Thanks to Long Hill Education Foundation, we, they did purchase new devices for us this year called Translate Live. We've put them to use a few times already, which was exciting. It is a device that we can have a one-on-one conversation with the parent, or we also can use it in broadcast mode. So at Gillette and Central back-to-school nights this year, we, it was available. I'm not sure how many people used it in the bigger presentation, but we definitely used it at Gillette in the, in Ms. Anderson's presentation with her class. We also have translators available through the Language Line phone service, which is a very direct phone service where we can call and have a person that speaks multitude of languages on the phone within seconds, which is available in hundreds of languages, and it's amazing. So they help us with phone calls to parents and they also help us translate meetings throughout the year. And we use that across all of our, any of our students, general ed, special ed, any type of meetings that we're having. We are starting to translate all school communications, eBlast alerts, letters that go home. We are translating them into their home language. The district website has automatic translation. They can pick their language on the website and it translates it. The same thing with Google Classroom. We are using I-ready, the Spanish version of I-ready, for any level one students. So students that have, have yet to progress to level two do, are able to take I-ready in Spanish. And for the first time this year, we are creating a bilingual advisory committee, and we are planning a multilingual learner-parent meeting, which the translation device will be used for so any of them can access the, the meeting in their native language. The nice thing about the translation device, it not only picks, they cannot only pick the language, they can also pick the country that they're from. So it actually is the dialect that they're used to. And I'm not sure who's next. I think we're back to Dr. Jones.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, so I've highlighted some highlights from our data that we use for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. We did see an increase in proficiency levels, which are levels four and five in grades three and six for ELA from 2023 through, up to 2024. We also had an increase in proficiency levels in grades three, six, and eight for math from the school year of 2023 and last school year. 100% of our geometry students met or exceeded expectations. 95% of our algebra students met or exceeded expectations. We did have five perfect scores, which was really awesome to see. We had an overall increase with vocabulary and numbers and operations, which was also, I was very happy to see that because we focused our after-school classes on those two domains. There were four domains total. Two of them, we saw an increase in vocab and numbers and operations, so that was good. And the cohort growth for grades, we did see cohort growth for grades four, six, and seven in ELA and grade seven in math. And what this means is the different colors that were shown before. So 2023, grades three showed improvement in 2024, grade four. And the same for 2024, sixth graders, they showed an improvement from when they were in fifth grade in 2023. So that was growth for ELA in those three grade levels and then in grade seven for math. So while we like to celebrate our highlights, we also are determined to rectify our areas for growth. We've noticed a disparity between girls and boys' ELA scores across all grade levels. We did notice a decrease in math from 2023 to 2024, from grades four to five, from grades five to six, and from grades seven to eight. So that was the cohorts that we showed. When compared to our 2019 data, our scores in ELA math and science are still lower than they are now for the most part. It wasn't every grade level, but it was enough to, to categorize it as an overall. And comprehension and geometry, which were the other two areas that we focused on the after-school classes, we still have room for growth there. Specifically in comprehension, it's divided up into two categories. It's comprehension overall, which is literature and informational text. We did better in literature, but we did not do as good as we should have in informational text. And then geometry, it was really analyzing two and three-dimensional shapes across all grade levels. Some of our intervention strategies that we have already implemented for the school year and some are a continuation of last year. We are hosting at Central School our informal walkthroughs with the sending districts. with the sending districts and the high school, focusing on math and ELA this year. So instead of us going up to the high school with the sending districts to walk and look at the different classrooms, they're going to be doing that at Central this year, which will help us with strategies and best practices from the sending districts and the high school. We are continuing with Conquer Mathematics: Professional Development. And for those at home who may not know what this is, it's a series of workshops that are focused really on the math content and pedagogy. We provide opportunities for teachers to unpack the standards, regardless of the curricular resources that you have. They deepen their understanding of the concepts and skills and work on what the students need to master per grade level. We are continuing collaboration with Wachong Hills Regional High School for tutoring opportunities for students. And tomorrow, we have, I believe, 18 students from Wachong Hills High School that are coming to Gillette to start our intervention program at K and 1. So we're looking forward to that. Teachers are going to use small group instruction to tailor the students' levels. So for those at home who may not know what this means, small group instruction, it's teachers organizing their students into smaller groups based on their needs, based on their ability levels, based on their learning styles. This approach allows teachers to provide personalized and targeted support and instruction, ensuring that students are engaged and challenged as appropriately. It fosters a more effective learning environment for students where they can progress at their own pace, they can receive immediate feedback, and benefit from collaborative learning from peers that are at similar levels as they are. We're also promoting age-appropriate academic goal-setting and tracking by students, tracking of progress by students directly. Teachers are going to be encouraging students at various grade levels to set specific and achievable academic goals that are suitable for their age and their developmental level. So each school, the way they are facilitating this is different based on the ages of the students. We're continuing with iReady Diagnostic and Learning Plan for grades K through 8 to assess each student's skills and tailor instruction to address individual needs and inform class instruction. We have had professional development so far. We have another one coming up next week. And we have arranged a lot of our data meetings in each of the schools to focus around the diagnostics and where do we go from here. We also are addressing at each grade level how we are monitoring the students meeting their target growth in iReady. Okay, additional interventions. We are creating open lines of communication with parents about their child's progress and ways they can help at home. As Mr. Alexis said, I will have another parent information session, October 17, at 7:00 PM. That will focus just on diagnostic one and how to understand it, how to read the report, everything through Genesis, how important it is to be engaged, and how you can support at home, and what does the information actually mean. This year, I prepared an iReady manual with the support of the administrative team just to have consistency amongst all grade levels. This was mirrored with our professional development on the first two days back at school with all teachers so that there is common language and common expectations in the district. We have a district-wide commitment of 45 minutes of iReady practice per week for both ELA and math, as well as suggested one lesson per day from children at home for both ELA and math. As stated before, we have several professional development sessions. We have seven total. For administrators and teachers scheduled this year, just in iReady and what to do with all of the data. And it's spaced out, I think, very evenly in between diagnostics, in the middle of the year, where we have so much information, are we seeing the growth that we want? We have data sheets for teachers based on iReady that we're looking on as a weekly basis to see the usage report. That's also a session on that at our upcoming professional development. We will have grade level at the K-5 and team meetings at the 6, 8, consisting of using the data that we receive to inform our teaching strategies and identifying areas needing improvement. And for the audience at home, this is when teachers come together in their grade level, which includes general ed, special education interventionists, and sometimes child study team members. It's really comprised of the teaching staff for each grade level. They analyze our student performance. So as Mr. Ritterello said before, that's where we dive deeper into the evidence statements at grades three through eight. For K through 2, we look at iReady, we look at F and P, we look at the benchmark assessments for mathematics and our writing prompts. And we discuss collaboratively how to enhance our teaching practice to reach all of the students at each grade level. And we are implementing the multi-tiered system of support, which is MTSS for grades K through 8. This is a framework for giving targeted support to struggling students. We are focusing significantly with small group instruction this year, which will tie in very nicely with our district goals and with all of the work that we're doing through iReady and our professional development. So everything is really coming together nicely with our plan of professional development this year for the staff. Okay, I'll turn the last few slides over to Ms. Backer, and then we will open it up for questions.
Good evening. So we're going to talk a little bit about culture, climate, and social-emotional learning, and how that impacts a student's overall academic performance. So social-emotional learning, also known as SEL, is a framework that helps students develop skills to manage their emotions, build relationships, and achieve their goals, academic and otherwise. SEL has an impact on students' behavioral health and is correlated to their academic performance. And SEL is an important component in the complete education of our students. So in connection with our social-emotional learning, we have our harassment, intimidation, and bullying law. And every year, we have to complete a self-assessment where we use a rubric created by the state, and we assess the effectiveness of our HIV procedures, our trainings, and our programs. And the report also reflects our commitment to creating and sustaining a positive culture and climate as a means for preventing and reducing any incidence of HIV in our schools. So all three of our schools have exceeded the requirements in all of the core elements and received a score of 77 out of a possible 78. The only area that we received a score of meeting the requirements was in the area of professional development for all of our members of the school climate team. So we will certainly try to offer some more opportunities for them this upcoming year. And then just to talk a little bit about how we support a positive culture and climate, we have our general counseling program, which consists of individual and group counseling, lunch bunches, and social skills. We have our Choose Love Social-Emotional Learning Program throughout all three of our schools. And that includes various monthly activities, programs, and lessons that relate to the social-emotional learning and development of our students. We have the Week of Respect, which kicked off today with Blue Out Bullying, Peace in Our Schools Week, and Red Ribbon Week. And during all of these three weeks, there will be activities related to the themes of the week with a focus on being respectful, kind citizens who support learning, relationships with their peers, and respecting our community and making healthy choices. We have monthly character education lessons, school climate team meetings, Tiger Team Assemblies at Gillette and Millington, where the entire school gathers together in an assembly that relates to SEL initiatives and reviews components of the character ed curriculum that the students are currently focusing on during that time period. We also have digital citizenship that is taught throughout all three of our schools in the form of assemblies, presentations, and follow-up activities. And I will give it back to Dr. Jones for questions.
Thank you. At this time, we can open up for any questions from the Board of Ed members.
Does anybody have any questions? Karen?
What was it, the foreign language, you know, English, second language learners? When a child comes in in kindergarten, do they progress faster than, let's say, if the child starts at a later grade? I mean, I was curious.
I think that's hard to answer. I can say what I think and then turn it over. So for case screening, we also test for that as well. And then we pass on the information to Mrs. Anderson. Just from what I've seen at Gillette purposes, I think it depends on when they come in during the school year, if it's either K or first grade, if it's in March, if it's in October. And if they have been through another school system in the country first, they progress a little bit quicker, from what I've seen, as opposed to coming from another country and learning everything brand new.
Research does show that the younger they are when they move here, they do progress through the stages of language development quicker. Obviously, for a little guy, you know, when they're coming in at five or six, there's a lot less history, there's a lot less... There's a lot less language that they need, there's a lot less social language that they need, and they do tend to progress a lot quicker than some of our older kids. Some of it's on top of just life experience, some of it's emotional, you know, why the families have come here. Some of our older kids are not super happy about being here at first. It takes a little bit longer to acclimate to the culture. So yeah, research does show that they do move through the language stages when they are younger. Many of our kindergartners, actually, the ones who were with us all last year, actually tested out of the program by the end of the year.
Okay, other questions?
I have a few.
Tom?
Got a minute? I'm noticing that the results of this testing, although there may have been improvements to cohorts, well, in blunt terms, they stink. Okay, math, 35% of the respondents, for the students, failed. They got a 1, 2, or 3, not a 4 or 5. When we get to grades six through eight, 75%, I'm sorry, 55% fail. Does anybody think that's good? Any parents at home watching, do you think that's good? Let's move on to science. I think we see similar responses. Science grades five and eight, 55% and 72% failure. That's not good. Not good. When we look at math results from 2019 to 2024, five years, so yeah, you can call COVID in there, we've gone down terribly. We got our increases, your tax increases every year, your 2% max, you got them. Grades have gone down. Kids are responding worse, not better. Not better for the more money. They're not doing as well. The kids in this town deserve to do well, including the newcomers. Every grade, down, 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 down. There are some aberrations to that, but for the most part. And when you talk about geometry, wow, we got 100%. Seven kids are not statistically valid. The same thing goes for algebra, it's a very low number. To come and say we're doing well, it's horrendous. Here, we're looking at the same thing here for 2024. Science results, 57.9% and 72.5% fail. They failed this testing, the state testing. Nobody came up, it wasn't a teacher had a bad day, it was a bad test. They fell against themselves.
Tom, do you have a question?
Yes, what are we going to do to make it better? I didn't hear anything. I heard some things that were good, but I didn't hear enough. We talked about grades three and six, that their increase in proficiency. But it was a decrease for four, five, seven, and eight. Increase in proficiency for three, six, and eight. A decrease for four, five, and seven. So don't say, "Well, we're great over here," but don't look over there because they're in trouble, but that's okay. It doesn't work that way. 35% fail in grades three and six for ELA. 50% fail three, six, eight, math. I can go on, and I might. What is the action plan? What I'd like to see too is if we could get this information from Wachong Hills Regional, I'd like to see us in comparison to the other sending districts because perhaps we're all in the same conundrum, and we're okay. And my anger here is not well-founded. But perhaps it's, we're not as good as we think we are. And certainly with these numbers, nobody should be proud. I'm not.
Yeah, Tom, I'll respond to that, yeah. I believe that what you heard tonight was really just a balanced presentation of the data. I mean, I don't think anyone's hiding from the fact that there are certain cohorts that decreased in their scoring or that certain performance grade levels were not where we want them to be. I don't know that any of them are really where we want them to be, but I don't think anyone's hiding anything. And I think really, this is about laying out what we're doing that's a little bit different than in the past to make sure that the kids are performing at a higher level. I think you just got to be careful with throwing around the percentages and using the term "failure" because it's not really how this test is designed. And when you look at the context of how these numbers compare with, not just the state level, we should be above the state level, we always are above the state level, pretty much. There are exceptions in the past. But when you look at the local scores, the national scores, everyone's struggling with the post-pandemic, you know, decline. I can't open a newsletter without reading something about that everywhere, you know, on a daily basis. So my point is, it's not where we want the scores to be. But I think if we focus on learning and we take this approach that we're analyzing data and using that data to inform instruction to help students, and we use the iReady tool to help move everyone forward in a sustained systemic way, you'll see improvements. Every district in the state of New Jersey is required to report the numbers, so we don't have to ask Wachong Hills for the numbers. Every administrative team will be doing a presentation before November 7, I believe. And then they'll be posting those things, those reports on the websites. So we can get a better idea.
Thank you, George. To give you some background, when we got these similar results last fall, I questioned them, and I was like, "Tom, you don't understand. You have to test in the spring, and then you'll understand." These numbers came out in the spring, and I said, "These are not good." Well, you don't understand. Well, I understand numbers pretty well to see that when you're approaching what we're looking for, that's a 3, and if you've made it, that's a 4. So either you're on the boat or you're not on the boat, and too many kids are not on the boat. And I'm glad that we're... I was very glad in the last meeting or the meeting before, where we provided the funding for teachers to go and get more education. That was a great thing, and I lauded it then. And if we could do more of those projects, and I think I read that, that's a good move forward. And I'm sure with you on it, you'll keep your eye on the ball. We got this.
Other questions?
Can I ask a contextual question? So when is this test administered? So it's a little bit different than iReady. Right, so iReady is done three times a year. When is this test administered?
This test is administered in the spring.
The spring, okay.
So it's in May.
Got it.
There's a window that the state puts out at the beginning of every school year, and then we set it up amongst our schools that work. So it's in May.
And when you think, when you look at kind of the Level Ones and you look at kind of the full student, right? Because some people excel in math over, you know, ELA and things like that. How do these compare to our promotion rates to the next grade level?
What do you mean, the promotion? What do you mean?
Right, so are we...
Holding kids back.
Right.
Oh, that's...
So when you look at students who score in the NJSLA in Level 1, I went through every student. Most of them have an IEP with a significant learning disability. There may be a few entering ELL students in that frame. So it's really hard to look at that when you're looking at percentage because some of the students, they're making progress within their IEP goals, but we have to still test them on that. So, and most of the students in Level 2, I would say, are also IEP, ELL students, some in our basic skill intervention programs. But they still may be making progress with like iReady, it's just the score in the NJSLA. So I hope I clarified that.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Also to add on to that for the promotion piece... Also to add on to that for the promotion piece, um, so as Mr. Vittarella said before, this is just one measurement, that, one measure that we use in collaboration with iReady and all the other, you know, the FMP and, um, benchmark assessments, but we look at this data in June, and then again in early September, and for those students that did not perform well on iReady and the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, or for the younger students that maybe had basic skills instruction the year before, or came in on a kindergarten readiness for the screening, a little bit lower than the class, we start with the interventions by mid-October. So there is modifications for students, as opposed to just, you know, promoting them because of social promotion or to the next grade level.
Got it. What is our, um, hold-back rate, if that's the right way to say that?
I don't.
It's rare that we hold students back.
Got it. Okay.
When my son was in second grade, it's like, one of his classmates got held back. That's going back thirty-something years.
Okay, so, so not very common.
Take that out of the data equation.
Not very common. And then I have one other question on the, the HIB, um, slide. You said seventy-seven out of seventy-eight. Is there a benchmark for the state, um, in terms of like what?
I think we score pretty high. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I could tell we score pretty high, seventy-seven out of seventy-eight, but what, do, do most districts score at like a sixty-five or something, just kind of?
It might not. Like, is there a rubric that?
I'm, I'm not really honestly sure. You could, um, like the NJSLA scores, it's required that it's reported on the websites. So I don't really want to answer for other school districts.
But they don't provide a benchmark like the other?
It's the same, it's the same rubric that every school has to use, every district has to use.
I guess my question.
They don't, they don't gauge it, Justin, like they do with, you know, the NJSLA. So you'll, you'll see scores that are all over the place, um, mid to low seventies, sometimes in the sixties. Uh, I don't think you see too many below that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Danielle?
I have a question. For the, um, the math curriculum that we're using, right, how, when did, what is it called? It's called Big Idea?
Yes.
And, and how long have we been using this math?
We have been using it at the middle school for
Twenty-twenty?
Six years. No, it's, it's a bit longer, and the, and the elementary for four years.
Right. So for four, so for the past four years. So we, we have that, I mean, we can see, um, maybe we need to look at that.
So in year five is when we do our, um, when we go through the re-evaluation for the textbooks and the programs that we use. Um, unless there are, you can do it after three years, um, if there's a significant reason to do that. Uh, we are looking at several different subjects this year, um, with some of the data that we have, but we can definitely take a look at that.
Um, because I just remember when it, I remember when it happened, and, um, I remember a lot of buzz, um, that, it was, it was too wordy, it was way too wordy. And I just feel like every year, it just, it, it keeps coming back with the same type of, um, anecdotal feedback.
So the board has supported sending some teachers to conquer math. Um, the woman who runs it, she's phenomenal. Big Ideas is one of the programs that she, she has promoted that hits on the standards. What's neat is the teachers have come back and really reframed how they're teaching some of those skills and standards, and even the mapping. So that's going into our drilling down with data too. So, um, my hope is we're going to get all of that a little bit more aligned.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? I, I want to thank you guys for coming. Uh, data is always very tricky to present, there's, it's, there's a lot of, it's a moving target really at the end of the day, so I want to thank you guys for all, um, coming tonight and giving us such a great presentation, and, um, we will work with Mr. Alexis to give you the support that you need, uh, to reach our goals. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications.
Okay. We, we've received a few emails from families about issues, this is over the last couple of weeks, about Millington's after-care program, and, uh, we contacted Alphabet, and they've acknowledged the unacceptable service in this one, um, you know, the one after-school, uh, service at Millington, and explained that the staffing shortage that they're experiencing is the underlying cause. They've assured us the issues will be rectified with new staff, uh, assigned to Millington School, and we actually saw a, a positive development this afternoon, uh, there with the new, the new staff members who will be in charge there. Uh, we also, the board also received an email sharing a concern about a leave situation at Millington. That email was forwarded to me by a board member, and I've discussed it with Principal Dawson, and I responded to the parent on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Okay. Board committee and liaison reports. I'll start with Karen.
Okay. Morris County Ed Services Commission, I had turned to the last meeting, it was virtual. Big things that came out of it is that, that bill was signed, and now that central school building does belong to Morris County Ed Services. They purchased it from the state for a dollar. Uh, the other thing was, at that meeting, we had a presentation on their transportation services, which is the mega-part of where they make their money. And the one interesting thing, and this has been year over year, and I mentioned because it deals with Morris County, they saw an increase in the, they provide transportation to junior and senior high school students who attend Morris County Community College, they have that program, and this year, again, there was an increase in the number of students transported. So I mean, like, which is, I think, very interesting, because it's, it's actually conceivable that a child can graduate from high school with an associate's degree at the same time. So it's an, it's a very interesting program. Governance met, excuse me, and, uh, high on the list, it was, uh, dealing with, uh, responses from the board retreat. Unfortunately, we got six responses, so it was a split, and it was a split vote. So, uh, we made some decisions on our own. Excuse me, I apologize. Um, we looked at the calendar, and, um, what we're going to aim for is in June, we have a, a board meeting, and then we're going to have a second meeting, and that second meeting is not going to be a board meeting, but it is only going to be discussing the CSA evaluation, the, with, with George, self-evaluation, and our goals. And may go from like five-thirty to eight-thirty, but it's only going to be that, it's not going to involve a meeting. And, um, then, I guess one of the things we thought was a trade-off is that, and Robin will be addressing this, and we're going to only have one meeting in March associated with, uh, budget information versus two this year, because of timing and all, so maybe, like I said, balance it out a little bit. Okay, strategic planning. Charlene joined us for this part of the call, because she went over, uh, the, the service that we enlisted from, uh, New Jersey School Boards, and, uh, it's generally a three-session situation, and we discussed a lot of stuff about making sure that we have, uh, the venue as well as the timing, so that as many of our stakeholders as possible could be, could be participating. So the things that were, were talked about were, like, not only having it every Tuesday, because somebody might have something on Tuesdays. So then we'll go maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, and then another day. We might have one, you know, two in-person and one virtual session, so that if a person can't make all three or only two, I mean, they can, they might have a better chance of at least participating in one of the sessions. And any input at any level is still valuable. We're looking to definitely have it sometime, I would say, in the, oh, specifically, um, like by mid-February, because Charlene alerted us to her retirement, and she said, you know, try not to go past March first. And it would be great to have somebody who is very familiar with us and, you know, knows the whole ballgame. A big part of it is going to be working with public relations for, uh, getting the word out, so that people will get involved and, or want to come, and to identify the, the special stakeholders that we want. One of the things Charlene mentioned was that they had this little video on one of the districts that she was dealing with, so we have, a little thought came up when somebody signs onto the website, we have one of those little quick clips, and it would be George or Kim, maybe a teacher, maybe even a student, that, you know, that thirty-second clip about the stu, the strategic planning session, so that, you know, we just keep, keeping it out there in the forefront, and that, that really has to start probably, you know, in November, to kind of get the ball rolling, because you have a lot of holidays, you got to keep things going. Uh, we did not get to talk about the committee responsibilities. Excuse me, you know, to go through them like I wanted, just wanted to remind everybody at our next board meeting, uh, Charlene is joining us, and it's, uh, starting at five-thirty, and, because it's very important about the strategic planning, the first half hour, she's going to go over with us the strategic planning, uh, program, and maybe some other discussions that we've had with her about it. And then the, the next hour and a half is to review of committee goals. So, um, we'll talk about it as the governance, but I know we kind of did it loosey-goosey last time, so maybe we could try to formalize it, and, and I'm not saying a big presentation, but like one sheet of paper that the committee can make available to the board members, and not talk about, like, what you do at your meeting, when you read out your meeting minutes, but specifically items that are, were identified, that were progress toward the goal that your committee identified. But we can go on with that forever. We have a meeting on the, um, presentation. George, Kim, and I are scheduled for Wednesday, and we might be looking to change our governance meeting from next week to Wednesday, if at all possible, and we can work with that, and George will.
Second.
Okay, finance. It's not going to be as, as, uh, how should I say this? As enjoyable as the other ones. So, okay. Uh, personnel get issue is still there for food service aides, but they, they persisted. They got an aide hired for Central School, and there's an agenda item for the approval. Sanitation certification came through. The big one is the Department of Agriculture, and the way it was described to me is like, you know, it's, you know, like when our normal board health comes around, like, take it up another level or two. It's a very, very major review, but everything seems to be going very well and in order for that. In terms of free and reduced lunch, uh, numbers, as of, uh, October second, there were ninety-two students that were eligible, or families, or students eligible, that's more identified as ten-point-seven percent of the population, which, uh, is over the number that we need, so that next year we'll be looking at a breakfast program. However, the key number, I guess, we have to identify with is October fifteenth. That's what they use for even identifying our state aid. So that's, that's a big on-roll number we got to watch for. Food update. There are changes going on constantly and continuously, uh, based on feedback that is coming in, and based on Robin's sampling of every meal that goes across, across the counter. So, uh, I guess part of our goal is to evaluate, you know, the effectiveness and, you know, and assess it, but it's still in a little bit of a state of flux. In terms of operationally, it's going all right. In terms of that particular dealing, and working with the food, has to be dealt with. And some of the queries have been made, is why can't we utilize more of the local establishments in town? It has to be known, real, remember, this is a federally regulated school lunch program. I mean, there are strict guidelines regarding, you know, proteins and starches and fruits and, uh, portion control and all. I mean, it's, uh, we were, I guess, very fortunate somehow to get the pizza in there, but it, we can't, there's not any other leniency that we can, that's feasible to get. Especially we're working with, you know, working with the vendor.
One question. Uh, under the Reagan administration, tomato was a vegetable, tomato ketchup? Does that still apply?
I have no idea.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
I have no idea. Okay. Transportation. Subscription bu, subscription busing numbers, eighty students, for a total of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars, and it represents about a ten-thousand-dollar increase over what was budgeted. So that was it. The milling and paving schedule for Northfield, you know, is still a lucid moving target, so there's nothing to talk about that. Hudsonway students. Twenty of our students have expressed interest in Mandarin, however, you don't know how many are going to show up. Right now, the charge that's negotiated with them for their Stein students is twenty-four-hundred dollars per student. Now, that'll be adjusted by, um, the, uh, payment for, if they can, or if they do join extracurricular activities, and adjusted for the Mandarin teacher. So we're working from that. Excuse me. Okay. Robin had put about a wellness, uh, program interest survey, the teachers, there was, there was a pretty good response, and intent, on ten-fifteen, there's going to be a professional development session about workman's compensation with the nurses and business staff. The session will also be led by the district's managed care organization. They're going to have, uh, a professional day scheduled for biometric screening and a wellness fitness session. Uh, the audit was complete, uh, we did it, we did banner, you know, banner well, very literally cents, I mean, three minor adjustments, literally cents. She said there was one for three cents, and one for thirty-eight cents, and another one, I forgot, but literally cents for three small adjustments. Um, I was hoping to, I only made a, a small note about the direct install agreements to truly deal with the ROD grants, that was more building and grounds, and I was going to lead that over to, uh, Katie to do, um, and maybe I'll just lead it over to you when you, when you talk, okay? Uh, RFP for special services staffing. Uh, we have two Somerset Hills students that required aids. One required a one-to-one aid, and one required a part-time aid, and there was advertising done to no avail, so an RFP had to go out to, you know, for an outside, you know, like a purchasing, and they got two personnel. The purchase for the one-to-one aid, this will all go into the tuition that's charged, we're not paying for that. Now, the part-time aid, obviously part of it, that aid will be charged to the student. The other part-time of the aid, we will be using, it'll be slightly more expensive than normal, but, as I mentioned, regular advertising in the openings did not have a response at all. Grants, um, from the American, you know, New Jersey American Water, a bottle, a bottle filling station for twenty-five-hundred dollars for Millington. Now, there was a question as to whether we fit the category, because you had to be one of the, uh, uh, you know, charitable organizations. Robin appealed under exceptions to public charity, charity status may occur on a limited basis, mainly because our facility is open to the general public, I mean, there's a lot of things that go on with the, the camp and the, the games that are played, et cetera, so we'll see how that works. And through an association that George belongs to, uh, applying for, or I don't even know, I don't know if we got it yet.
Yeah, it's, um, for some flexible furniture.
I know it's for, but did we get it?
Oh, no, no, we haven't submitted it yet.
Okay. So it's for flexible furniture that'll be used in Millington. A regionalization, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, regionalization study, uh, myriads, mounds of information has been requested on governance and law, demography, education and programs, finance and operations. Dr. Jones is working on it, as well as the business office, they're tackling it little by little. You're going to see there are resolutions for final reports dealing with ESA, non-public completion, IDEA. There was another records day announced, uh, shredding day announced in town, taking advantage of it. Um, there are six boxes that will be shredded, all approved by the auditor, and last year, if you recall, Watchong had a problem, they had to get their kids to a sporting event, and their driver was not available, and their bus was broken, so they came to us and loaned it to them. You're going to see a resolution to formalize that kind of a thing again, should it happen. And it's kind of nice to have this give and take, back and forth between the, you know, And it's kinda nice to have this give and take back and forth between the, you know, our, our neighboring district. And all the bills reviewed and are in order. That's the story.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? Okay, Danielle?
Um, I don't have an update for the Community Relations Committee, we're gonna be meeting on October ninth at four P M. Um, so, uh, I'll move on to the PTO update, which, um, they had their first glow party at Gillette School, which is super exciting. I attended with my, my child and, um, I saw Justin there and it was a lot of fun, it was a huge success. Uh, the PTO, uh, said that more, more students and their parents showed up than had anticipated. So it was, it was awesome. Um, and they'll be doing more things for Millington and Central moving forward. So, and also I just wanna remind people that, uh, there are many different fundraisers happening, so they're doing the, the pasta fundraiser, they're doing the spirit blankets fundraiser and they have spiritware available, um, at their website all year long now. So feel free to go to LongHillPTO, uh, dot membership toolkit dot com and, um, that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Danielle?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Somebody like me, it's, it's easy to order.
You can go to the glow glow party, Karen, yes.
I gotta say, the pictures look great, they really did. But it, I can't order, I mean, it's like I have to be a member of the PTO.
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, that is, I'll find out.
Or you could text me and I can order it for you.
Well, yeah, but still, I mean.
It's good for community, yeah.
Yeah, for the community to be able to purchase a LongHill spirit, yeah, wear. Yeah, I'll ask, yeah, it's a good question.
Those pajama pants are cozy. I don't know if they're still there, they're from a previous year.
They do have them, yes. Um, Crystal, do you have anything?
Um, nothing to report this month, but, um, I did wanna say and echo the week of re- that it is the week of respect, as was mentioned, um, by the administrative team and in doing so for the week of respect, um, I think it's important for all of us to remember that we have this assessment and, um, this is a snapshot of our students, but the data on our students is that they are whole people, um, and who are working very hard and I'm just very proud of the teachers and the administration for using that data, both about the students and this data that was presented this evening to make sure that they're learning and, um, welcoming, um, in the best way.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, and I wanna thank, Crystal will be serving on the QSA committee, uh, on behalf of the board, so I wanna thank her for that. Ann?
Um, I have a few updates, um, I'm gonna start with the Watchung Hills Shared Services and Regionalization Advisory Committee meeting, summer, and that was just the title. Um, we met on September thirtieth, um, the report I have is a report that's given to all the, uh, sending districts and the participating municipal, uh, governing boards as well, uh, so here we go. The Watchung Hills Shared Services and Regionalization Advisory Committee met on Monday, September thirtieth with representation from both school district and municipal, uh, governing boards and the Rowan School Regionalization Institute Study Team. Uh, one topic was data analysis. The group received a report from the RSRI Study Team about progress in acquiring the necessary data from various parties. They have been and continue to be in the process of collecting state data for each district and have requested additional data from each district. The goal is to complete data acquisition by early November. Uh, two was culture and climate surveys. A discussion ensued regarding the New Jersey School Climate Improvement Survey developed by Rutgers University as a source of information for the study. Watchung Hills Regional will be reporting its survey results in October. Watchung Borough is starting the survey and we, uh, LongHill are reviewing it, uh, as a possibility for the district. The information from these surveys will be critical in helping the RSRI Study Team understand what additional information may be needed that's not covered by the surveys. Topic three was community engagement. The advisory group spent a significant portion of the meeting discussing the various strategies and timing for community engagement. The following is a timeline for sequencing of communication, uh, the timeline may adjust as goes on. Um, October, a district PTO leadership meeting where the RSRI Study Team will work with the district to coordinate a roundtable discussion with each district's executive leadership of the PTOs and PTAs. In November, post-election, uh, newsletter, uh, articles, a community summary outlining the shared services and regionalization study process and progress will be released and distributed through all district and municipal communication channels. Uh, there'll be an editorial meeting, um, scheduled with local editors to review the study's process and progress. Uh, in December, we will have a key education stakeholder meetings, I say wait, but I mean the RSRI Study Team, uh, which will meet a district with educational leaders and eighth and ninth grade teachers to glean more information that might not be readily extrapolated from the data collected, i.e. for district professionals to help fill in the gaps for the data from the state. Uh, and districts may not include for consideration, uh, oh, data that the state and the districts may not include for consideration as part of the study. And this is building towards January, a community town hall, which will be a first in-person town hall to bring community members together for a discussion regarding the shared service regionalization study and review of the process remaining to complete the project. Uh, the fourth topic of discussion was the demographic studies. Uh, the SSR Advisory Committee discussed the process for acquiring demographic studies for each community. There was additional discussion regarding the impact of the new round of affordable housing requirements to be released in twenty twenty-five. It's clear from the discussion that this will not have any bearing on the study, given that the potential impact of the new requirements will not come to fruition for another dec- decade, if at all. Uh, number five topic was the study priority review. The SSR Advisory Committee reviewed the priorities for shared service analysis. The priorities are special education, transportation and curriculum alignment. There was discussion regarding models for investigating curriculum alignment, including a model used by Northern Valley Regional and their sending districts. This model utilized a shared, utilizes a shared curriculum center that coordinates a verti- uh, ver- vertical curriculum alignment across all districts and coordinates all faculty and staff professional learning. The RSRI Institute Study Team will be investigating this model for consideration. And finally, the timeline, the goal is for the SSR Advisory Committee and the RSRI Study Team to produce, uh, and for the districts to accept a thorough, well-organized, detailed and easily accessible document for all stakeholders. The goal is that the report, um, for the report is towards the end of the second quarter of twenty twenty-five, May and June, but it may be adjusted this deadline to ensure the best possible study report is prepared and presented for all of the communities. Uh, the SSR Advisory Group will reconvene later this year as the Rowan School Regionalization Institute Study Team makes additional progress. So that was the, the meeting, um, and again, it, uh, it's a great gathering actually of representatives from each, uh, of the sending districts, the high school and the township committees as well from each of the sending districts. Okay. Uh, we also had a student achievement, uh, committee, uh, curriculum and committee meeting on October second last week, um, and the, the bulk of the conversation we've already reviewed in the presentation, um, I did wanna just say for the board that, um, what we've seen today, it, it, this is the main focus of what the student, um, curriculum, the student achievement and curriculum committee works on, you know, not just the, the state testing scores, but all of the data and information as it comes across, uh, the district's desk and as we're working on it and we cycle back to questions, I took notes on what we were speaking about today. Um, our committee's first goal is the district's first goal, uh, and aligned with it, and I'll just read it, I know we know it, but the, the work of the committee is to raise academic performance by deepening student understanding through inquiry-based strategies, personalized learning and a critical and creative problem solving. Um, we are looking at the data and I think, um, what Mr. Alexis said, it's a balanced look at the data. There are areas where we are improving and we are seeing the hard work of the district come to fruition and there are areas where we see that there's continued focus needed and those, those are the conversations we have. Uh, I wanna encourage everyone to reach out to me via email if you have any questions for our, our meetings or future meetings. We are planning on meeting on October twenty-ninth, which will be the week prior to our next board meeting. Um, another part of our, uh, meeting on Wednesday was that we had the pleasure of meeting with the, um, three staff members who had done curriculum revision over the summer, uh, so we had Mrs. Byrd from the, uh, talk about the fifth grade social studies. We had Mrs., uh, Nad Bielni, uh, who was our new steam teacher, uh, at, at the middle school, uh, and spoke about, uh, the wonderful, um, programs and, and activities she had written into that curriculum. And we had Ms. Pierce, who is a first grade teacher at Gillette, who updated us on changes to the ELA and social studies, um, at first grade. And I just wanted to point out, even in that conversation, how we're reaching back to district goals and conversations because, uh, when we were speaking with Mrs. Byrd, Mrs. Byrd, Mr. Alexis and Dr. Jones were talking about something called Mini DBQs, right, which are document-based inquiry questions where students look at primary source documents on historical information. And that type of addition into the curriculum, which is something that they're, they're looking into, uh, grades five, eight, is working on the skill of informational text, which is one of the areas we're seeing in the testing today come out and, and, you know, it's just, there, there are small pieces, I think, in everything that our teachers do and that they work on and improving that build to create, you know, the larger picture of our student's success. Uh, it's exciting, I, I oddly liked the conversation of Mini DBQs, um, and primary source documents, but we will leave my report there.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Uh, any questions for Ann? Okay, Tom?
Nothing to report this month.
Okay, Justin?
Uh, just briefly for, on behalf of, uh, Ms. Ruverlo for the Policy Committee, um, a couple of things here in thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six, deleted two policies, some new changes to some others, uh, but we are meeting on ten-eight at eight P M. to keep powering through our policies.
Okay, um, I will say, uh, any questions for Justin? Okay, we were, when we were at the Morris County School Boards Association meeting last, uh, last week, right, uh, last week, your policy work was mentioned from Charlene Peterson as like the model for how to go through policies and so that was pretty exciting to hear.
I didn't know, I guess Melissa shared our spreadsheet with New Jersey School Boards and they use it, I mean, it's like.
We should've licensed it. We'd have had a revenue.
Additional revenue sources.
Absolutely, we could've made a fortune.
Check, okay, but that was, um, that was nice and then also the mention, and Karen I think mentioned this before, but we did attend, uh, the Morris County School Boards Association meeting, myself, Danielle, Mr. Alexis, Ms. Bomer, uh, last week, uh, highlighting the board certification. There were a couple of other school boards that got that, but that really is, um, uh, like a certification of all of the work that the board is putting in with different, um, I don't wanna say courses, but training that we are doing and ours was above and beyond, right, what you needed to be to be certified and so we did get a little bit of like, ooh, when Charlene announced actually how many credits we had versus how many we needed. Um, so we will continue to do that because I know that's one of the board's ongoing, uh, priorities.
Can I just say, like, we've always maintained our master board status and in fact, we've achieved, and I can't remember, but I think it's very few out of, there's six hundred and something districts?
Yes.
And I think there's only fifty-seven in New Jersey that have Carol E. Lawrence and we're one of them. We have that certification. What this did, um, is, I, actually Charlene says that they're thinking about this, somebody, if a board maintains it for ten years, have a ten-year plaque. If they maintain it for fifty, have a, this is just a form of, of like, you know, re-acknowledging the certification that's there. It's not that we didn't have it and we went for it, we maintained it, just so that people are aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, um, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and let me begin by congratulating all of our board members, uh, on maintaining the board certification. Um, we did have a nice evening last Wednesday, uh, we heard a lot, we saw other school districts, Charlene said very kind remarks and honored our board, uh, and that was great to be part of. On the subject of school boards, Karen mentioned that Karen, Kim and I are looking forward to presenting our governance seminar at the annual statewide NJ SBA workshop in Atlantic City in two weeks. And as for the agenda, you'll see, uh, the bi-annual SSDS report. This is one, uh, for January one, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and as I've said in the past, we're very fortunate to have so few incidents. Even so, sometimes the state-required coding system can be misleading and we have, uh, you'll see that tonight on the, uh, board agenda where we have a few violence entries at Millington. The nature of these incidents are not cause for concern, it's just a required reporting, uh, and the way, uh, incidents are, are required to be coded. The Hudson Way Shared Services Agreement also mentioned this evening is on the agenda. The after-school Mandarin program is scheduled to begin this month. Uh, the six Hudson Way students in our sixth grade science class are doing well and enjoying their time at Central. Under Personnel, you'll see that Kathy Dobyshevsky has submitted her retirement, she has been serving the district for twenty-one years. She has been an excellent teacher, a dedicated advocate for children and a great teammate during her long tenure in LongHill. Last, you will see a resolution authorizing the submission of the annual security statement of assurance. I wanna recognize the police, first aid, fire and public safety officials for their help with our annual review of our safety and security plan. And that's it for me this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, uh, Business Administrator's Report.
Okay, well Karen, pretty much covered almost everything under the finance agenda. Um, a couple of things that we do wanna go over, the direct install agreements that we've been talking about, there's another round coming up, so I passed on this last round because this last round only had Central in it. Central is our icing on the cake, I have to make sure that Millington can be done first, so they can do Central and Millington, I believe, come the December round, so let's get budget numbers for those to make sure that we're not passing on what's needed to go for the, the more, um, the more, uh, central one. Um, uh, the, uh, budget calendar, the, uh, calendar that is on the agenda showing the dates, um, we went through, that we changed it, as Karen mentioned, to have just a March meeting and what we decided is once the governor releases the figures in February, I will then do the presentation that you all are used to seeing, that way I can release the presentation so that you can, all can view the presentation, ask any questions, and then we'll just do our one March meeting as opposed to having two March meetings just a week apart. Um, and I think that'll work and that'll give us an opportunity to discuss anything that's ongoing and actually give me an opportunity, once we get the governor's numbers, to make sure that we have a good final budget, so I think that'll work. Um, then the other thing there is just that you'll notice a little change on the agenda, we used to have everything saying by the recommendation of the superintendent and the business administrator and our county superintendent mentioned in the QSA meeting that it really should just be the superintendent, that all questions should go to the superintendent. I am recommending to the superintendent, who is then recommending to the board, so that's just a matter of having, uh, the correct, um, uh, flow on the agenda, so there's just that change. Is there anything else that I can talk to anybody about or explain?
Just one thing I wanna emphasize then, uh, even though it's only gonna be one session that you see identifying associated with the, the budget, the board is going to have time, you know, weeks to look at the budget and review it. It's just a question of, of the meeting, why double up? I mean, she can do it through the presentation and giving you the information, we don't need a special meeting for it.
Get a copy of the budget and a copy of the presentation and then view it on your ti- take time, digest, ask questions, that, so that we all feel good about it. Okay, lunch today was delicious, it's past the Mondays.
I was gonna ask about that, but, very nice.
What'd you have today?
Tortellini and string beans.
I'm jealous. Better than my lunch.
Yeah, it was, it was fine, it was good. I heard the kids liked the Egg McMuffin on Friday, I heard that was good. I also had a really nice meeting with all of our lunch aides and our food service people on Friday, um, and we just went through the program, what's working, what's not working. They need help cutting the pizza, uh, for Pizza Day, they couldn't do that fast enough, um, so that was a little thing, but the kids enjoyed the, the Taz pizza, um, they gave, told me what the kids really liked to keep on the menu and what, you know, is not working that will take off in November. And then we have, um, the Department of, uh, Agriculture coming on the eighteenth, so that's our big, they review all our records, they review all our applications, they review, they walk through our cafeteries making sure we have all the correct certi- certifications, that the menus are hung up, and then they watch to see how we actually serve to make sure that we are doing it correctly and that everything is getting out, so that should be the next hurdle and we should be good.
Great, sounds good. Okay, um, any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, resolutions, uh, Karen, will you move in the minutes, items number one?
So moved.
Second.
Danielle? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grocott?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Danielle, will you move in financials, numbers two through sixteen?
So moved.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
And Ms. Case?
Yes. Uh, Crystal, will you move in special services, numbers seventeen through twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Uh, Anne, will you move in personnel items, number twenty-one through thirty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I just wanted to take a moment to say that, uh, Ms. Dobchewski, who I will call Mrs. D., uh, will be deeply missed. Um, I, I just list words that come to mind when I think of her and I have kind, warm, knowledgeable, diligent, caring, effective, highly skilled. Um, Mrs. D. is the type of teacher who, quite frankly, I think, takes as much time to, to assist parents in their learning and helping the students as she did with her students. Uh, she's a wonderful asset to our community. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to, to tell her congratulations as she moves on beyond us.
Thank you, thank you very much, Anne. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
And Mrs. Case?
Yes. Uh, Tom, will you move in curriculum, number thirty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Fun field trips, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Uh, Justin, will you move in policy numbers thirty-four through thirty-six?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Um, going back to Karen, Karen, will you move in other number thirty-seven through forty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, any items for discussion, any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Extentions? Opposition? Okay, great.